9th, 2019, Brooklyn zoning board of appeals meeting. I'll call the meeting to order. Ms. Schlutto, could we have roll call please?
Board member Allen?
Here.
Board member Butts?
Here.
Board member Gesund?
Here.
Board member Krug?
Here.
Board member McAlpine?
Here.
Board member Uller?
Here.
Board member Hatchett? Alternate Ward? Chair Evans?
Here.
So just so everybody's aware and welcome everybody by the way, thanks for attending. This is a seven-member board, we have two alternates. As you can see, we... Is everybody here? Yeah, everybody's here, so we have seven members seating, so we're a full board. And we do have one alternate here in the audience, in the instance that a matter is postponed. And a member who has heard the case at the previous meeting, it's possible the alternate may be asked to sit. But we'll see if we get to that point. So with that, I'll ask everybody to stand and face the flag and we'll say the pledge of allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of British Commons. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the agenda? Does staff or any members of the board have any changes to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
If there's no changes, revisions, I would make a motion that we approve the agenda for our meeting on December 9th tonight.
Support.
It's tied, so we'll give it to Mr. Krug. Any discussion? Ms. Schlutto?
Butts?
Yes.
Gesund?
Yes.
Krug?
Yes.
McAlpine?
Yes.
Uller?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the approval of our previous meeting minutes, November 12th, 2019. You've all received a copy of those in the packet, are there any proposed changes? Amendments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept those draft amendments. Motion to accept as presented?
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? Ms. Schlutto?
Gesund?
Yes.
Krug?
Yes.
McAlpine?
Yes.
Uller? Allen?
Yes.
Butts?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes. Okay, our first item for the agenda is application for a variance at 2287 Franklin. Is the applicant here? I see you're here, great, we'll ask you to come up in just a moment. Ms. Schlutto, could you summarize the case for the board please?
Thank you, I'd like to reference my December 2nd, 2019 review letter. This is for the case PBA-05-19, a variance for a side yard setback at 2287 Franklin. The applicant has requested to permit the construction of an accessory, of an attached accessory structure into the side yard setback along Berkeley Avenue. This particular property is zoned R1D, and in that single-family residential district, a side yard setback on a corner lot, a 10-yard, a 10-foot setback is required on the corner lot. The applicant is requesting to construct their attached accessory structure eight feet into that side yard setback, with an additional two feet of concrete skirting that would connect to the sidewalk. The proposed addition, the applicant is asking specifically for the variance into the side yard setback. The proposed addition will not impact front or rear yard setbacks, height, lot coverage, all those other requirements will be in compliance with the zoning ordinance. The standards for review for a variance are laid out in section 138-606 of the zoning ordinance. There are six criteria that need to be reviewed. Letter A, the need for the variance is due to unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property. The subject site is located in a single-family residential district where the, all the budding properties are zoned R1D, and they all adhere to that 10-foot required setback on the corner lot. There isn't anything that is unique to this property for this request. Letter B, the need for the variance is not the result of actions of the property owner or previous property owners. The subject size is, the subject site is limited to the size of the lot that was created prior to the current owners taking ownership of the property. The surrounding neighbors have... The surrounding properties are all built within the limitations of the zoning ordinance, except for the property that's directly across the street. They have this, almost the exact same attached accessory structure built to the side of their house, about eight feet into that side yard setback with the two-foot concrete skirting that I mentioned. However, upon review, that addition was built between 1963 and 1964, prior to the adoption of the current ordinance or any of its amendments. Therefore, that property across the street, that structure would be considered a non-conforming structure, and it is allowed to maintain as it is, but we would not be able to build that to our current standards without this variance. Letter C, strict compliance with the ordinance will unreasonably prevent the property owner from using the property for a committed purpose, or will render conformity with those regulations unnecessarily burdensome. The applicant is requesting to construct within the established side yard setbacks. Their, the limited size of the lot prohibits the property owner from constructing the addition that would suit their family needs. Letter D, the requested variance is the minimum variance necessary to do substantial justice to the applicant, as well as other property owners. The specs for the attached structure that the applicant is requesting has been provided to you in your packet. That is the smallest structure that they are requesting, they're not requesting to go any larger than that, but that is what they are requesting to construct at this time. They, the property does have substantial area in the rear yard for any kind of attached accessory to the rear, however, there is an attached open deck in the rear part of their yard, so if they were to redesign their addition, it would have to go into the back where they'd have to remove the existing structure to build this mudroom that they are requesting. So, anything that would go in the rear yard would then require them to demolish something that they already enjoy. And letter E, the requested variance will not adversely impact the surrounding properties. As I mentioned before, this property is on a corner, and all the other properties, save for the one across the street, have adhered to the side yard setbacks of the 10 feet. Anything that would be built that would encroach into that has the potential to encroach into the sidewalk area where pedestrians, bicyclists frequent. For the variance to go forward, the zoning board of appeals would have to determine that the applicant and the materials have satisfied all six of this criteria. With that, I'll take any questions.
Any member of the board have any questions for staff? I have a couple. And I think you talked about this a little bit, I just want to be clear, does the lot comply, the lot itself comply with zoning ordinance standards, with area, those types of things?
Yes, it does. And the, I'm sorry, the requested variance would not impact or would not create a non-conformity with the lot coverage or anything else of that nature, they would still be in compliance with this.
And there's as per setback variance?
There's just with setback, yes.
And in the review for the fifth criteria, as mentioned in the report, that it would set precedent, would it necessarily bind the board if a variance were granted to grant all similar requests, or simply perhaps, I was just wondering if there's a clarification on the statute being set precedent?
Well, we have had other applicants before this board who have requested similar side yard setback variances. So if we allow one that had encroaches to this step, then we'd have to look at all the other ones that have come before us, whether they're smaller or larger.
Alright, gotcha. With that being said, would the applicant step up to the podium and tell us about your variance and why you need it?
Well, um...
Well, and could you say your name and address?
Yeah, my name's Connor Shawdrives.
And Beth Shawdrives.
Thanks for coming.
We have a single-story ranch with an entrance on the side of the house, and if you've been in one of those, you know how small that landing space is when you come in and out. And because the garage is set behind the house, it's not, you know, next to or whatever, that's the primary, you know, means of entrance, otherwise we either have to walk through our backyard to get in the house, or we'd have to walk all the way around in front. So that's, you know, that side entrance is the main entrance that we use. We have two young children who have boots and, you know, snow pants and coats and hats and gloves and all those things, and to be frank, it's hazardous sometimes in the winter, coming in and out of that door, so we, you know, and as she mentioned, the neighbors across the street, obviously I didn't realize it had been built that long ago, but from 1963, they have something very similar. So when we saw that, we were like, okay, that would be a great solution to the problem if we could have, you know, sort of a multipurpose, you know, three-season room that we could put coats and hats and boots and some other storage and stuff in that area so that we can keep that landing there, because it goes right down the staircase. So that was our primary sort of logic, to want to construct the mudroom.
I would also like to clarify, I don't know if this makes a difference to you, but to me it made more sense. The door, if you guys will look on the blueprint, the door for the mudroom would exit into our yard, as opposed to out onto the sidewalk, and then we would have, you know, a gate out, basically, so here's our house, and here's our driveway, we would have a gate through the yard, just a shorter trip to take. So this would actually eliminate what we've been doing, which is coming out, we took our fence down, but we planned to put another one up after hopefully the construction of this. So we were basically coming out onto the sidewalk, going all the way around. This might actually impede bikers and walkers less, because we would hope to enclose it with a fence.
Okay, so you're saying the exit to the solarium is actually southward as opposed to west?
Correct, correct.
Okay, got it.
Whereas our fence was westward opening.
Anything else? Alright, if you just hold on, do any members of the board have any questions for the applicant? I have, I have one question. You said it couldn't go on the back, is there a, I think I've seen a house similar to yours in Berkeley, but I don't want to presume, there's no door in the back, is that because there's other rooms, no hallway, et cetera, you'd have to chop the house up to, if you were to walk through and go out the back of the house, the south wall?
There is, there is a door on the back of the house that opens up on the deck. As she mentioned, we have a deck there, for it to build on the back of the house, you'd have to remove the deck entirely, and then that off.
In addition, it opens right into our dining room, which is extremely unideal for, you know, storing all of the gear, so we would have to basically walk through our dining room and kitchen and hang it all up in the area already designated. This way, we would be able to just come through that door, hang things up, and then go upstairs.
Gotcha. Alright, well, if you have a seat?
Thanks.
Thank you. Alright, at this point, I'll open up the matter for any member of the public who'd like to speak on this matter. Is there anyone here who would like to address the board? Anyone here who'd like to address the board on the matter? Okay, I'll close out the public comment, and staff, have we received any comments from the members of the public in writing?
We did receive the, the one that was included in your packet that was received last week, and then there's one that's at your desk that we received this afternoon.
Okay, and these are for, these are for the other case?
It is.
So we didn't receive any for this one?
Correct, I apologize, yes.
Okay, thank you, alright. I'll close the public hearing and turn it back over to the board for any discussion. Any members of the board like to address this matter? Mr. Allen?
Yeah, reiterating from the meeting that we had last month, encroachment on a public sidewalk, even visually making the space seem smaller, is something that really have a hard time doing, for bicyclists, for people walking, walking their dog. It was nice to hear that we could be fenced, but while on the positive side that they would be able to retain their privacy there, I think it would encroach further in visually on the sidewalk. That's just my own personal opinion.
Okay, thank you. Any additional comments from any of the board members?
Mr. Krug? One thought, if you picture this addition coming up fairly close to the sidewalk, with our codes, you could have a six-foot tall privacy fence, a foot from the sidewalk, coming up to the front of the house, so as far as walking along something, you could have, you know, a fence there and be the same type of thing.
And am I not correct, I believe the house to the north that has the same, has almost a berm if I'm not mistaken, or some kind of shrubbery or something along their side.
The, the proposed addition is fair enough back that it wouldn't interfere with traffic and being able to see around, around the corner. That's usually a problem for me for some reason, that I can never see around, around corners, even with cars parked on the street.
Any other board member comments?
I would like to go forward, I just don't know how good I can. To keep this kind of extension, you'd have to, have to, you know, get, uh, just say best your heart will say, you know, for it right now. I had to follow that last week, and I think it stinks because, you know, like, you know, I don't think it's really, I don't think I, uh, you know, it's just, it's only, only perfectly, but, then just decide you can't move on, now going on, or approaching it up, aside from, uh, the other way around, you know, it's kind of, you know.
It makes sense, but at the same time, we're limited by our requirements of what we have to, what we have to follow the requirements in order to, in order to pass this, and I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing it meeting, meeting any of the requirements.
They have to meet all five, and if they don't meet all five, the board shouldn't grant the variance. I see this as a nice plan, but I believe there's alternatives, and I'm just not seeing the unique circumstances with the property. The lot itself is, is properly dimensioned for the district, it's not an outlier. The applicant has testified that the existing wood deck does enter into, say, a dining room, as opposed to the example I know of, a bedroom, or perhaps a more substantial modification or different uses, perhaps an already not-lighted home would have to be changed a little for bedrooms, the rooms that would enter into. Certainly, I also believe that, you know, if they did, and after someone in this situation wanted a room at the south end of their house, the wood deck could be replaced, this, this structure, and also with what Mr. Ullar said, back to the uniqueness portion, there are hundreds, if not thousands, of similarly situated parcels in the city, and to say that this was unique, I think I just have trouble fitting it to our standards, so I'm not comfortable with holding on to granting this report.
This is more a question for staff, if they did move this to the backyard and replace the deck, would they still need the variance?
Well, it depends on the size of the deck that they're going to be doing. They do have a large enough backyard where they conceivably could do both without a variance.
Does it, it comes, 30 feet required between the home and...
10, 10 feet.
Oh, 10 feet's required between the garage and the house, okay, gotcha.
I guess, Mr. Trydell, so this is probably the worst part of our, our sitting up in this, in this chair, is that while I can sympathize with what you want to do, I walk my dog past your house and the house across the street, I've never felt like I'm staring in anyone's backyard, or I'm impeding, you know, that there's an issue that way, but we are bound by five standards, and I have to agree with the board that it's, we're having a difficult time truly justifying in black and white that this meets the standards versus, this is something we'd like to do and it makes sense for you, and it makes sense for a lot of other houses. We, when we, you know, took the oath to sit these seats, we had to abide by those standards, so I think I have to agree unfortunately.
Heard from just about everybody, is there any additional comments, or any more?
I'll go ahead and make the motion, I'd like to make a motion that we deny the request for the variance for PBA-05-19 at 2287 Franklin, based upon the fact that it unfortunately does not meet the five standards that we are required to evaluate this request on.
Motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, then, Mr. Krug? Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing done, Ms. Schlutto?
Krug?
Yes.
McAlpine?
Yes.
Uller? Allen?
Yes.
Butts? Gesund?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes. Variance denied, I'm sorry, your variance has been denied, thank you for your time tonight. Our next case is a several variance request for a property at 2571 Coolidge Highway. Ms. Schlutto, could you give us a brief summary of the request?
Yes, I'd like to reference my December 3rd, 2019 review letter. This is the application PBA-06-19. There are three variances to be reviewed at this time. One is section 138-61 of the zoning ordinance, permitting storage of a trailer-mounted accessory structure on a commercial property. The applicant is requesting to place a 48-foot trailer-mounted accessory structure for the purpose of conducting MRIs. This would be an accessory to the medical office that would occupy the current family video that's located at that, at that location. Variance number two, variance from section 138-218 subsection B, that would prohibit the reduction of the parking from existing or new use. The, as I mentioned, the family video would be reoccupied for the medical office use, and this proposed trailer-mounted accessory structure would be parked within that parking area along the south side of the building, it would occupy at least six, six parking spaces. And variance number three, variance to section 138-219 subsection four of the zoning ordinance, requires parking space for medical use. The medical office requires one parking space per 100 square feet of usable floor area, and based upon the, the request, there, the entire site contains 43 parking spaces, including two barrier-free. The existing dental office requires 17 parking spaces based on their requirement. Their parking requirement would be fulfilled, however, the medical office that they're planning to occupy would need to be in conformance with the zoning ordinance. Based upon the number of usable floor area, which is approximately 2,905 square feet, they would require 29 parking spaces for the medical office. Currently on-site, there are 26 spaces for, for this use, so they would, with or without the accessory structure, they would still need this, this variance. Three spaces without the accessory structure, and nine spaces with the accessory structure. I have outlined the standards for review, all five, for each of these three variances. They are included in, in my report. However, just to give a brief discussion, the, the request to place the trailer-mounted accessory structure on the property is at the request of the applicant, there isn't anything unique or circumstantial to the property in of itself, it is within the business plan of the, of the applicant and the owner to want to move forward with this as part of their business plan. The configuration of the lot itself and the way it had been designed, specifically with the video retail business in use, there isn't any property, any additional property or any additional green space for them to place this trailer-mounted accessory structure on the, on the property, so they would have to occupy some of these parking spaces in order to place it on the site. And as I noted before, the, the request for the parking variance is based on the, the use of the medical office, so whether or not the variance for the trailer-mounted accessory structure to be placed on this property, whether or not that variance is granted, they would still require a variance for, for the parking at this site. Three spaces without, and then six spaces with. Without, take any questions?
Okay. Mr. Allen?
They would have an opportunity, correct me if I'm wrong, to pick up two parking spaces for having a bike rack, is that correct?
That is correct.
So that would make us a deficit of one, at that?
Or a, or a seven, seven, seven.
Yes, one, four, seven.
Okay. Any additional questions, board members? Okay, thank you. I believe the applicants are here. You just have the microphone, tell us your name, your residence, and tell us now why you need your variance.
Wonderful, good evening, Justin Danaskis, 900 South Flapeer, Oxford, Michigan, along here with the applicant.
How you doing? Omar Elias, 5650, Ozbournville, Michigan.
As the planner consultant on this project, first, obviously, thank you for the opportunity tonight, and I think as hopefully you'll see in your community director's report, as well as all the information we submitted, though, three may sound like a big number and so forth, I think we really meet or exceed every single finding each of the three various asks. And we're really here because of the strict application of each of those exact requirements which we'll go through, and nothing against your ordinance, I just say the strict application of, just because that's why we're here, because I want to spend a few minutes also talking about the real-life application, as we're talking about relocating a business from Royal Oak, very well-received, well-operated business from a setting that is much more compact, much less parking, operated very well in Royal Oak for a number of years, proven operator college, as will be coming to the site, which really, as we look at the box where it fits, you couldn't ask really for a better use to round out the use of the former very active retail of the video store. You have the very active, well semi-active dentist that's taking half of the property. This use, the number of patients that come, the folks that it takes to operate, the professional staff, very light, you couldn't, I don't think there's another use we could find permitted or by special that would have less of an impact of people coming in and out. And the unit itself, the technology, the MRI unit, it's on-demand, one day a week that it's there. Even when that's there with the staff, the flow of the patients, let Omar talk in just a minute on that, really, on the dentist, everyone else would say thank you, you know, they couldn't have a better use for the rest of it.
Not to interrupt, but rather than wait and try to remember to ask?
Oh, yeah.
So, it's gonna be, it'll only be there one day a week, it'll be removed?
Yeah, so it comes in at nighttime, it gets dropped off in the nighttime on the side of the building, so in an hour, I can only see up to one to two patients an hour. Eighty percent of my business is all by medical transportation, so that means the patient is dropped off, the transportation company leaves to go pick up another patient, come back, drop off that patient, pick up the patient.
Alright, well, you've answered my question, didn't mean to throw you off.
No, that's helpful, thank you.
Go ahead and pick up, go ahead and pick up where we want to leave off.
Yeah, and sorry, anyone, I like to talk, so, and I want to get it all, because there's three requests, so please, yes, stop, we want to make sure we can...
Just on the line, I did want to expand, maybe add on more days, you know, I just wanted to see how it will go.
Okay, alright.
So further, again, because we just want to make sure, I know, because again, three S sounds like a lot, but being, kind of finishing out the true life application so forth, you look where the actual unit is located, again, kind of custom tailored for the site, like if you would have built the site and the owners here of the property, if it's very nicely, you don't, like, you build the site for this to go here in and out, makes sense for when it's not in use. And the requirement for the parking itself, we were talking and working greatly with your staff and Aaron about the use, we don't need, the applicant doesn't need a fraction of what the actual office space is for the business, but we didn't want to play semantics with having a 800-square-foot hallway. square foot hallway and, uh, for all this common space, want to make it look nice, presentable. Um, but really, you know, if we played semantics with what's really, you only need the front five hundred square feet, um, for the use. So, again, strict application of using that entire box, not trying to play semantics, not trying to shove a third retailer in there or do something else. Um, you know, we really believe that, um, we're utilizing what's there. If you put, you know, pick the other permitted use, how many box trucks or semis we'd have coming versus this one set schedule, um, and I think it's, we meet all the requirements as it relates to the various variant, uh, requests, but there's three of them, so any questions, we'll kind of leave it open for you folks, kind of on that, if you would, versus me rambling on.
That's perfectly acceptable. I'm, I'm confident that all the board members have read in detail everything you provided. Uh, many of us have visited the site, and certainly do the board members have any questions? Mr. Allen?
Just a clarification. Um, you said it will be there one day a week, but you plan to perhaps expand the operation if it's, if it's successful?
Well, it's successful, but, you know, I'm basically through the state of Michigan, you have to go through like a lot of applications to expand it, so that's why. Um, so my goal is to be there three or four days a week, um, because I have a second site somewhere else where the, uh, the, the instrument will go to the other site for the other three days a week.
Okay.
So I have three employees, um, that come in, and like I said, it's literally one or two patients an hour. My study takes about thirty minutes. I'm not sure if any of you have had an MRI done in the past, but it takes about thirty minutes between changing, doing the intake paperwork, in and out, thirty minutes. So within an hour, I have one or two patients that come in. Like I stated earlier, eighty percent of my business is through medical transportation. So we have, I don't know how many.
Spots?
Seventeen or eighteen spots available for our use.
Yeah, if you look at the calculation.
We looked at seventeen minus forty-three, um, I mean, there's plenty of room. Right now, I'm in Royal Oak, I only have eight parking spots with my staff. And I've been doing that since two thousand thirteen.
Another question that I had for you, as well as being someone who's had an MRI before and who happens to be pretty good friends with a guy that repairs MRI machines, they are noisy. They're extremely noisy.
So where my MRI is right now, um, is right, there's a house right behind it. I've never had a complaint since two thousand thirteen.
Okay.
If you go to my site, I can give you my address. Um, I'll buy there, it's literally right behind the house, house right behind me.
And then it may have been older units where, uh, we brought some pictures of the Siemens unit, they're state-of-the-art units, um, into, you know, get the capacity, to get through all the state permitting over the years to get extra days, you know, it's, takes stuff like this, being operating, um, and we have pictures here that kind of, it's, I think the HVAC, the cooling and so forth, the imagery, depends if it's encased or not. Uh, we've seen some other units, so maybe that was from other sites, but there's never been issues.
I've never had complaints.
Through the chair, if I approach.
What's going on the days when it's not there?
Yeah.
How many days I sit up during the night?
About four days.
Why do I notice?
Um, it's a small office. It's not as nice as an outdated building. I need to move. I actually bought Bosch's MRI center, his first MRI center on Thirteen Mile, not the one on Woodward. So his first site was right there. Yeah, so it's a very outdated building, it's a very outdated office. I want it to move so I can, you know, we can have a beautiful operation.
I wasn't really impressed at his final MRI.
So cervical lumbar thoracic, I would say twenty minutes tops, depending on the type of techs you got. Some techs thirty-five minutes.
Oh, good.
All three levels, I would say a solid hour. Doesn't happen a lot, if it's all three levels, it really depends, those are really rare cases.
If I may?
Yes.
Um, so you have the, the, the trailer is just, is just the machine, right?
Yes.
So they're changing in the existing medical office building and then walking to the trailer, or how does that?
Yes.
Okay. So, next question, um, the existing medical office building has an eight hundred square foot lobby area. Can you maybe take some of that for the four hundred and change instead of having a, a trailer outside where the patients have to go from inside the building, walk ten feet from the building into the trailer?
To the instrument?
Yeah.
No, that's, that's impossible. It's a, it's a specific license. Um, so Bosch was mobile for about two decades until he was able to do what a hospital does. I mean, it's a point system through the state of Michigan, and to get to that point system, it's almost impossible. It takes a very, very long time to build this point system. But that's the goal eventually. That's why I, I'm going more days, more points, so that, to get to that end goal.
To demonstrate with portable unit that.
That I'm.
According to state standards, once they get a comfort level with their rating system, however, that, and that, is that state law?
Yeah, you get fifty-five hundred points. So that's, you know, that's why I'm gonna, I have two sites now, between both sites, within twelve months, I can do more than that.
So if you wanted to, you could pull one in here.
It's a, it's a possibility.
And so then, and then proven trail.
Oh. Answered your question?
Yes.
And no infractions, uh, ever from the state, from the record, no issues local, do you know issues in?
Use third-party transportation. We have Mercy Transport, we have SNL Transport. I mean, it's just basically, a lot of times we tell the patients, if you have used medical transportation company that you prefer, please call them, we will set up through them, or we just use the ones that we use. It's really, where there's available, nobody uses specific.
What would be your hours of operation on the day that you have this, the, um, MRI machine?
Thirty-six.
So just another point of clarification, in this particular location, you just want to operate one day a week, or you're gonna operate more days a week with the MRI machine and only be on site one day a week?
So we start with one day a week, because that's what I would give a proof for first, and then add on more days as the state approves it. It's just a long process.
Okay.
Every time, it takes like sixty-five to do this.
So you're, you envision this more as a long-term site?
Yes.
So that, um, the amount of, uh, traffic, right, if this should be approved in the beginning would be less, and then as you added days, the use would, would increase?
It's always gonna be one or two patients an hour, no matter how many days I have, and no matter how much, how busy. I cannot actually physically do more studies than that at a time.
And then, uh, the, uh, he's looking to upgrade from, you know, what he has now with image, you know, build out and so forth, and then also long-term, so even if the doc next door, that's one of the things we were looking at the site, the doc was running full bore, and he's spending multiple days sitting there, even with you and everything else, it's like, I got all the parking in the world, this would be fine, even if I'm running seven days, which you can't, seven days a week, even if he's full bored, he can park.
Yeah, the dentist is sometimes busier this morning. Sometimes busier.
I, I have a question, and it ties a little bit to, uh, Ms. McAlpine, I've been thinking. So only MRIs here, right? So if you were granted, there'd be no other medical type uses?
Nothing.
Correct. All right, and you comply with this floor plan?
Yes.
Made that a condition. How many square feet are you leasing total?
Two, I don't know, it's like twelve. It's a pretty big space. Total, I, I have a total, I think, I thought I did. Well, there's six. Twenty-five hundred, yes, that's what I thought, about twenty-five hundred roughly.
Just so you know, I've got my calculator, I'm just trying to.
All right, yeah, twenty-five hundred, I apologize, because we had the original site plan that we, uh, that had the calc a little better, we're gonna have an overall in this one.
Revising a little bit.
And you can see the, our square footage on the actual units, because, uh, we were adding it up, because again, we didn't want to chop up boxes, big hallways to meet the parking calculations, you know, we wanted to make it look and function, um, so we were trying to add it up to see what, you know, worked for the ordinance.
I have a question for you, but maybe staff could, could help out on this, this regards the parking. So I'm thinking, could you reduce, let me back up. I see what appears on the plan to be a lot of open space, undedicated. Would it be possible, what would it take, or is that even feasible? Talk a little bit about, what about just leasing less space, or perhaps creating separate suites to reduce the need for variance? In other words, if you, and I'm, I'm not familiar with the parking standard, but on the surface, just using the numbers, if they're leasing twenty-five hundred space to go to medical office, they need one space per hundred, or, it says usable floor area, so can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, so the, um, in the absence of the detailed floor plan, which we didn't have at the time, um, there was, um, approximately forty-three hundred, uh, square feet of, of the building. So based on that, um, the usable floor area was about twenty-nine hundred square feet. Um, so with one space per one hundred square feet of usable floor area, um, that's twenty-nine parking spaces. So that's what would be retired for a medical office.
Okay, so everything we see on the, the lease space is pretty much incorporated into the parking calculation?
Yes.
Okay, so twenty-nine hundred divided by eleven.
Right, and the only thing in the, the usable floor area that's not, that's not, if you were to look at a detailed floor plan, it doesn't include, um, areas for, um, utility or maintenance rooms, uh, toiletries, that type of thing, but storage areas are included in that calculation of usable floor area.
Lobby area, hallway, I'm just reading office, all that, is in there, but maybe the janitor's closet might not be.
The hall, the hallways aren't included, but a lobby or a general circulation area would be included in the usable floor area.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
And so by all means, you know, we'd make a thousand square foot janitorial closet, because we don't need all the whole square footage, but I thought we'd say, hey, this is a realistic one, what's there.
The janitor's closet's already there, the bathroom's already there, so we didn't want to touch on all of it.
Mr. Allen? You know, we, you know, we discussed.
Perfect.
Your business, right, do you know what person I am talking to? Any questions from the board members? Okay, well, I think there's no more questions. Thank you, and if you'd like to have a seat. And at this point, I'll open, head up to public comment. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak? Please step up to the microphone, and if you can give us, of course, tell us your name, and if you can give us an idea of where you are relative to the site, that can be helpful.
Yes, hi, I'm Julie Forte, I own the dental office next door, two five six nine Coolidge Highway, and I just want to just kind of make a note, I'm, I'm against this because I, with all due respect, as somebody who's occupied the space for over two years now and personally paid for the e-growth or the entryway for the cement to be redone with my own money, even though I am a leaser or a leasing, it's gonna be a lot of wear and tear on the parking lot. We don't realize about this, of the area at all, as I have a huge problem with all the high school parents parking in my lot for not, sometimes one to two hours.
Could you please address?
Yeah, sorry, yeah, one to two hours, sitting in the lot. I have, you know, talked to the, you think the corporate, they really haven't been very helpful, honestly, in terms of, they, they placed a sign there, so the ability to have the police come in there and shake up the lot, I have to do multiple times, uh, a month, that, you know, I've, I've talked to the school to address that. Not only do we have a problem with the high school parents sitting there in the lot, because, you know, they're coming from all other cities and in the area, not just, you know, Huntington Woods and Berkeley itself, but Farina's is next door, they have big events there all the time, all of their clientele come and park in that lot. So I have a lot of problems already, honestly, with patients saying, I, I can't come to your office at this time, because we know the lot's gonna be full with all kinds of people that shouldn't be parking there already. So, yeah, and I also have ten employees in my office, they have suggested that we park on that south side of the building, and that, you know, I, I don't, I'm not sure exactly where they're all gonna be able to park.
Okay, very good, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there any else who'd like to speak? Sir, please.
Jason, Jason Yuhas, five hundred Snapdragon Lane, DuWitt, Michigan. Uh, I represent the owner of the building, um, they're out of Chicago, and, uh, we, of course, welcome them, uh, coming into the, the site. As the video business declines, we have, you can see them going out all over the place, and moving other retailers in, like Dollar Generals and things like that, having a, another medical use of Julie's to go in there and have a nice professional building, a medical use building would be a benefit not only to, to us as the property owners, but also the community versus maybe another retailer that, uh, can come in, come in and come out. So, uh, we would be in support of that as the owners.
Thank you.
Lisa Bransky, from Berkeley. Uh, I live in another area where we also have the traffic from businesses, uh, into the neighborhood, and I've heard him say they'd be bringing the trailer in very early in the day, um, and, uh, I'm thinking there's an apartment building right next door to that, that would be very, very, um, not very nice.
Let the speaker speak?
That, uh, you know, um, I know if I lived in that apartment building, that would be very, very disruptive to have a trailer in and out of there. And, uh, in reading this through, I see that in one place it says a permanent structure, and another place, um, parking, and in another place it says one day a week. So now we're talking one day a week, but we're gonna add on, um, there is medical building, um, William Beaumont Building that has medical, um, release on Twelve Mile Road near Woodward, that has ample, ample parking to put a trailer in. This just doesn't seem to be the location for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Yes, please.
Hello, my name is Georgia Dixon. I'm at two six one five Kenmore at Cotelpa. My driveway is on Cotelpa. I'm Katie Coroner from Family Video Progressive Health with Dr. Hartunian, the apartment building that's on the south side of Cotelpa, and naturally the high school is on the other side of Coolidge. Between the high school, Dr. Corkigian's office, not the family video, but the apartment building, everybody parks in front of my house all day, every day, most of the days during the week. I cannot park my car in the front of my house, and I've been there many, many years and paid taxes for many years, so nothing is being quote, "done" for me as the bread and butter resident of Berkeley. I've talked to Dr. Corkigian's office, which is to the north on Coolidge and Cotelpa, and he has told me point blank that he's gonna park there. His staff parks there for day parking every day because it's a public street, and they can do what they want, so they don't care. So they're in the neighborhood. I sent pictures to Matt Baumgartner in October, I've called Public Safety, Public Safety told me that they thought that Corkigian's office had a relationship with Family Video where people, whoever it is, going to Corkigian's office could park. I have seen vendors parking over at the Family Video space, but the staff for Corkigian's office parks up and down Kenmore Street most of the days. So I am upset. I have nothing against this business, this medical business, I, I don't, I encourage everything, but I want to be able to park my car in front of my house. So I don't want any more abuse with quote, "day parking." And really, Corkigian's office has been quite obstreperous and belligerent, because I've sent him letters, we've called Beaumont, I talked to the doctor, they don't care. This is a public street, we're gonna do what we want.
Thank you for coming.
I'm against it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak who has not already spoken? Anyone? Last final time? Anyone who speak who has not spoken? Thank you. I'll now close the public hearing. Ms. McAlpine, have you received any correspondence?
Um, yes, we have. Uh, we have a letter here dated December second that's actually from Ms. Dixon who spoke, and her husband, and basically, um, reiterates exactly what she was just saying. Um, and I just want to clarify, though, that we have integrated healthcare in this letter, but it's actually progressive. No, that's okay, I just need to, so, um, for all of you, if you write it, that's, that just needs to be clarified, but we did receive that correspondence. And then we also. And then we also received correspondence from, um, Kimry Campbell and William Fox, who reside at two-six-six-zero Sunny Knoll. This was received on December sixth, two thousand nineteen. Um, and I'll just summarize what I read here quickly. Um, they are not able to attend the meeting, and so they wanted to submit their comments. Basically, um, first of all, their gut reaction is that it would be unattractive, particularly since it's visible from both Cotelpa and Coolidge. This is also a high-traffic corner, and it could conceivably impact visibility, although probably plans to install it to one side. So they obviously had not seen the plan, but that was what they had indicated here. Um, but they are definitely more confident on the issue of parking. They have resided in their home for thirty years, um, around the corner on Sunny Knoll, and they have a recurring problem with parking as well. Um, they cite issues when there are events at Farina's in the summer, uh, when frosty freezes busy and crowded with cars. Um, our driveway and that of our neighbors has a thirteen-foot curb, which is not large enough for standard vehicles, but people do it anyways uh, because there's limited parking. And then finally, they also cite the issue, um, that with Anderson located to the west of this requested, uh, location and the high school located on the other side of Coolidge, that parents do, um, sit and wait, um, for their students at this inconvenient distance. They're not on school property, and there is indication that parking is already a premium. And there's also no par, on-street parking in Cotelpa. So available parking in Coolidge is minimal. And, um, they state here that allowing a business to reduce the number of spaces in its lot would not be wise. Demand is high and use, using the neighborhood as an overflow is not feasible, and they recommend denial as well.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'll close the public hearing, so I'll turn it over to the board for any comments or discussion. Mr. Allen?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, um, I'm asking Erin a question. Going back to what Mr. Evans talked about earlier, about possibly reducing the size of that and opening up another space in there. There really isn't anything that you're going to be able to put in there that's not going to be parking-heavy, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we just run back into the same problem?
We would, yes.
Okay. Um, one of the things that's bothersome, and I, I see it go on around town quite a bit, is we seem to want to drive traffic into the neighborhoods, and I don't think we do it consciously. I think we do it subconsciously. And, um, granted, those are public streets, and as distasteful as it is, if someone pulls in front of your house, you know, I don't get it very much because I'm in the middle of the block, but I imagine if I lived at one end of the block or the other, that I'd be wrestling with it too. And I can, and I can see their point on this. Um, personally, I don't think that it meets all five of the criteria. And I got to believe there's a better place to do this within the community.
Thank you. Mr. Krug?
Yeah, I, I kind of go along with what Steve's saying, and also, um, I'm just thinking of this. We hear enough complaints of just garbage trucks and stuff in the middle of the night coming, and, and you're going to have, uh, you know, a semi tractor basically hauling this and pulling it in and pulling it out. I just see that becoming a problem too. And it, it really seems like something like this belongs more in a commercial, industrial-type area, or, I don't know, something totally away from a neighborhood.
Um, I too agree. I, I don't believe that the property, um, is correct. And I'm just going to simply go back to, uh, the parking, that the congestion that happens in that, on that corner from, I would say, anywhere from two to four o'clock. Um, I did have daughters that went to Anderson and the high school, and I frequently, uh, would park in this lot, waiting for them to come down the street. Um, so I understand that. I do not even go down Cotelpa at that time. I always, I just go a different way because you'll get stuck at that light. And I, I'm, I have a real, um, concern about taking away parking spaces from an already very, very busy area, especially during certain times of the afternoon. And I know you only see one to two patients, but it's still, cars are parked there on, on both of those sides of the lot, the one abutting, um, Cotelpa and the one abutting the building. It, it's crazy, um, and the kids, the way they walk there, it's just, um, I would think if you have also medical transportation coming in, they're going to have problems turning, getting in, getting out. Um, I just think it's, it's a cut, very, very congested area, um, given, given the way it is already. I'm fearful that we're going to make parking on the side street or Cotelpa already worse than it is now.
Any other comments or board members?
Um, more, more of a point of clarification for staff. Um, the medical building on the north side of Cotelpa is, has a parking agreement with, with the Family Video parking lot.
I discussed that with the applicant, and he informed me that that, uh, agreement was suspended. Um, if we want to...
Sir, could you just step up to the mic since, just so it gets on the, uh, record? You represent the property owner, right?
Yes, I represent the property owner. Uh, there was an agreement with those guys, uh, to park there. Uh, there could be ten spots, is what they had. Uh, that obviously wasn't working, uh, as the lieutenant had stated. Uh, and so that was, that was canceled, and they're not allowed to park there. Um, like, you know, I don't know that you can do much about that. You, you were parking there and not supposed to, and, and, uh,
A few times.
Yeah, regardless of whether Family Video is there or anything, or anybody.
Now, you, yeah, you've answered the question, thank you very much.
And if I, if I may just, uh, piggyback on that, um, any future shared parking agreement, um, if it was ever even entertained, that it would not be permitted, um, because you're not allowed to cross a major thoroughfare like Cotelpa. So they would not be able to enter into a new agreement like that.
That was going to be my next question, if Cotelpa's kind of an in-between road, if that was considered a main thoroughfare or not?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I'm, uh, I'm not in favor of this. Well, I think possibly it could work, and this would be independent of all the, uh, comments that we've heard regarding the unauthorized, uh, informal uses. Um, I'm just not, I don't believe there's a unique circumstance on this property that would warrant the use. Uh, well, actually, warrant relief from all three requests. Um, I believe it is, is a result of the actions of the applicant, that this is the proposed use, and I think in this instance, um, given, given what the ordinance says, we're just asking to put eight pounds of cement in a real five-pound bag. Um, there are other uses available for this property. Those only allows a wide variety of uses. And so in summary, um, and it, it's questionable, as we've heard from public comment and board member comment, um, I don't think, I, I know I'm not convinced that the requested, uh, variance will not adversely impact. I think it very possibly will, may impact surrounding property. So there's several standards I don't believe this application needs. I'm prepared to, to look at it. Mr. Allen?
I, uh, I can make a motion to deny, uh, request PBA dash zero-six dash nineteen for twenty-five seventy-one to Coolidge Highway. And the reasoning behind that is all five of the criteria were not met in all three of the requests.
Motion to deny all three, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Krug, second. Do we have any additional discussion or comments from the board members? We're ready for roll call.
McAlpine?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Butts?
Yes.
Gesund?
Yes.
Krug?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes. Okay, thank you for coming. I'm sorry your variance has been denied, we appreciate your time, so. We'll move on to other business. Do any members of the board or staff have any other business? Okay, actually, I do. Mr., yes, Mr. Butts?
Um, the application form for, this is for Erin.
Application forms that everybody's filling out, says our meeting starts at seven-thirty?
Yes, yes, I did note that, um, earlier this week. These, um, applications are currently being, um, updated and amended. So that is, that is something that I've already addressed. It's just the, the new forms haven't, haven't gone live yet.
You know, I, I'm just piggybacking on that, uh,
Figure you're on.
I think we've been using these forms for a little while. I think this is the first meeting that, because I talked about that too.
Yes.
Board members have noticed that.
Just to piggyback on that, um, I would like to state that the report that you, the way you're doing things is, is remarkable, and the other report that you sent us about what's going on in the city is, is very, very helpful. I would also, um, ask as the board that if there are any other improvements she sees to the form or the application, um, that you at least bring them to us so that we can make sure it's the most effective form, because like, obviously, you're bringing some new ideas to the table. So I'd encourage you to look at that with a, you know, clear eye and maybe not say, I'm just going to change the date.
No, there, there are other, there are other things, yes.
I'm assuming there would be, but we welcome that as well.
But if that'd be something that the board would like to look at before it goes live, I can make sure I can put that in next month's package.
Uh, we'll just leave this.
Yeah, I don't...
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I don't, this board member doesn't necessarily want to get into redesigning it. It's been there for two years.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I, I just want to make sure that you feel like you have the authority to look at it, um, more critically and, and find tunic beyond just updating it.
Thank you. I have, uh, one thing that I wanted to take the opportunity to thank Erin for, uh, the beginning of the monthly reports. Really well done. Thank you for putting together history for us. And also, I can't tell you how much nicer it is to get the packets a little bit early rather than at the eleventh hour on the Friday before the Monday meeting, because my weekends with a six-year-old at home are usually like pandemonium. So it gives me a few days to take a look at the site and read things over. Thank you very much.
I'd also like to thank, thank Erin for the, for the monthly reports. Um, that's something that I've been looking for, for quite a while. And, uh, and the, uh, and finally, just to everyone who's left here and everyone at home, have a happy holiday and a prosperous two thousand twenty.
Yes, yes. I, I have a, I have a comment, but I'm going to save it for, again, the public comments. But closer to that, um, hearing no more? Councilmember Hennan is here with our monthly liaison report.
Yes, at, um, our last council meeting, we found a small problem with the marijuana licensing ordinance. So it will go back for, I guess we'll call it a third reading, um, at our next meeting. Um, but I don't expect any issues there. The marijuana zoning ordinance did pass its first reading, and will come back to us also for the second reading. And then I just wanted to mention that, uh, coming to a council meeting soon is, um, an attendance ordinance, so that, uh, we'll have required attendance requirements for all of our boards and commissions. And then toward the ZBA and planning commission, um, required training because of the important and technical rules that you guys have.
Great, excuse me. Thank you. It's time for any, any member of the public who would like to address the board? Is there any member? We see one member of the public, Ms. Ward?
As an alternate member of the zoning board of appeals, I, I saw, um, Miles, um, really have a difficult time with the first item that we looked at. I served on this board when it was initially, uh, begun, um, back in the, um, eighties, nineteen eighties. I, I would like to see us perhaps revisit the whole issue of side yard setbacks um, and see if it would be possible to come up with some, um, method that would allow, um, homeowners to use their side yards, um, to the highest and best use for the property. I don't know how we would do it, but I would certainly like to visit the issue. I think it's important. And this, it, it appears that this is going to be a continuous issue, um, especially with people not wanting to leave Berkeley, wanting to stay in their home, but needing additional space within their home uh, to take care of aging family members, uh, expanding families, and, um, other individuals, um, that want to live with, uh, a family here in Berkeley. So I, I think it's something, and, um, I thought it was important to discuss it with the entire board, since everybody is here tonight, um, to see if maybe staff could, uh, look at the possibility of, uh, coming up with some type of, uh, mutually agreed-upon way that we can deal with, uh, side yard setbacks. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hennan?
Yes, so after these two meetings, I had asked my notes to ask Ms. Flue later if we could look at that. This does become a planning commission and a, a legislative question. Um, but, you know, my question is, why, why do we have this setback? Is there a rationale behind it, or is it arbitrary? And, and should we look at relaxing it for the reasons that were discussed? Or is it a standard that we as a community want to keep? So I am open and was going to suggest that we do look into this.
Okay. I, I have one comment regarding that. If any other board members have a comment? Okay, just want to jump into your space. Um, yes, I agree, this would be a legislative decision. Um, these types of issues would be addressed typically by the zoning ordinance. Uh, since it is a zoning standard, we've got limited, uh, ability as a board for what we do, we're very narrowly tailored as to our powers. I know traditionally, one test to give a community, perhaps, in this case, the planning commission for recommendations and city council for support is, if the same kind of variance is being denied time after time after time, perhaps that can be a special study issue for a zoning ordinance event. Now, we are working on the master plan as well, and that could also be incorporated into the new master plan as potentially one of the goals to accomplish, uh, as a, uh, plan. So master plan can address something like that. Uh, so there's a number of ways we can do it. Ultimately, I, I agree, uh, it's going to have to be legislated, and we'll have to look at it carefully, and there's probably going to be other issues that come out of the master plan that, uh, typically the step after you do a master plan is you take a look at your zoning ordinance, see how that fits into advance development in the, you know, city or redevelopment. Mr. Allen?
Yeah, you're absolutely right, that those are indicators when things come back time and time again. They're indicators of things that need to be looked at. We just went through that a couple of years ago with generators. Outside accessory structures. So, you know, when you see them come up, I guess it's time to look at them again.
So definitely, you're, you're, uh, and just to address, so the, uh, master plan, are we still, uh, accepting, uh, applications for people to be on the, uh?
We are, yes. Uh, tomorrow, uh, December tenth is the deadline for applications, so that they can be presented to city council at their December sixteenth meeting to make appointments.
So that's the members of the master plan, what's that called, the steering committee?
Steering committee, mhm.
Okay, and they kind of oversee, not oversee, but kind of give some direction to the whole master plan process?
Yeah.
Which would take up to two years.
Mhm, yeah, the, the steering committee will work with our, um, contracted vendor, Carla Wartman Associates, to develop the master plan. And then they will, um, kind of do more of the heavy lifting of the planning and, and recommending, and then the planning commission will, will then do more of the, the fine tuning before it goes to city council and to the public for, for draft comment.
So maybe one, uh, additional step relative to, uh, your comments would be is, this might be a planning commission issue as well, so definitely, uh, spread your wings on this one. Feel free to participate in that.
I have one more, um, question, I guess, piggybacking on this. How many requests have we had, or is it just because we've had two in a row for these side yard setbacks? I'm just curious. I'm just curious.
Since I've begun here, um, I've only been here since July. So, uh, in my tenure, there's only been the two. But, um, I can definitely look at that and see how many we, we have received in, in the past. Um, I know parking variances have been very popular here with the zoning board, um, but I haven't done, um, done research on the side yard question.
And then, and then... Sir, I apologize. Uh, we're kinda taking over the public comment here. Uh, I guess before I had any more thoughts, and now I just thought of it, now I'm talking too. Is there anyone, any other members of the public that would like to speak? Oh, you're for the Ferndale? Okay, well, welcome.
Welcome.
Ferndale, Berkeley. Ferndale Zoning Board of Appeals, thanks for attending. All right, let's bring it back to any additional discussion regarding...
Well, and, and I don't, we, we, why don't you go with what you were gonna say next, and then I'll see if that's...
I don't remember what else I'm saying.
Okay. Um, I, I guess part of, part of my thought process is, I, and I'm not saying we do not do this. I'm just saying that I know, um, I think we have to demonstrate the need to the planning commission, and if we don't have enough of these continual requests, they may not understand why we're doing it. So, um, I would just figure out what our thought process is behind asking them to reevaluate it, because it's, it's, it's a very horrible, uh, decision to have to make when you see a resident who wants this. I mean, but it's, it's, it's not gray, it's black and white.
You reminded me what I wanted to say.
Okay, there you go.
So as part of a, a, a robust master plan and then a zoning ordinance amendment, um, process, um, reviewing of zoning board cases, perhaps planning commission cases over, over the years can also give a snapshot to, uh, maybe not said at the steering committee, but definitely the consultants as to what's been happening in the past. So in theory, if we're to get two of these every month for the next six months, I'm confident that it's going to be, um, front and center. Amongst all the other things that's on the master plan.
Yeah, I just, I just was curious, given that I don't recall having a lot of these in the past. I'm not saying that we're not gonna be a lot more coming. Um, we, we seem to kind of have these up and flows of different, different things that come in front of us. So I think if that process is followed, or at least that input, um, is given regarding the type of requests that we get, uh, when they're looking at the master plan, I think that would help justify, um, the need for these. And then I do think you even go a step further and say, "Okay, we don't have a lot, but is this something that eventually will start to happen as people start, their families start to grow, and, you know, people are coming in here?"
I think I recall a couple, uh, for, for some, but I think I recall some of the conversations with buildings.
Yeah.
Um, and that's the other issue is, you know, are we gonna distinguish between, you know, a long-time, pretty resident, uh, who wants to add on something for their family versus, um, you know, the companies who are, who are buying up, you know, properties, turning down old homes, and just wanna build a big one that is...
Well, and that is...
Endaging, and is that different, and should it be different? Um, I don't know, I think it's a, overall, it's an interesting... Because part of the, the charm and character of Berkeley to me has always been it's a place where first-time homebuyers can come. A lot of that is based on there are small homes and smaller lots. And if all those smaller homes and smaller lots are tacking on things on the sides and, um, getting bigger and everything's, big houses and posters stand aside a lot, I think Berkeley is, is a term, so it's kinda...
I think the planning commission ought to watch this video as part of their preparation for the answer.
I don't know any answer.
And I don't, I don't either, and I think that, I think it's an interesting discussion, because talking about those builds, we, a lot of the situations we, I remember encountering where the house, you know, next to it or on the other side was not conforming, and they had a variance, and they weren't, it didn't sit right in the lot. So that caused, you know, then it was like, okay, is this truly the cause?
There was also, just like, nobody can have a house smaller than two thousand square feet now. And if the builder was saying that, I mean, nobody...
Right, yes, yeah. Well, we could probably have a whole meeting just on this.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Um, there, there's also the existing homes that are non-conforming. So what was the, what was the requirement that we came up with originally that we have to have fifteen feet between houses and ten feet, ten feet before, before the, the sidewalk? What was the, what was the rationale behind that? That this was put into place? Because a lot of the, a lot of the home, existing homes are already non-conforming to the current ordinance.
Couple more things that the, uh, commission would look at here.
The other thing that's always bothered me about the large houses when they put a bunch of them together, they're using the same standards for the one thousand square foot, eleven hundred square foot homes. And today's building materials are not as robust as they were back when those rules were put in place. So you have the same short spacing between the old buildings as you do the new buildings, and that's bothering me a lot, ever since I saw them start to spring up everywhere.
I'm gonna postpone this meeting to the next planning commission.
Yes, do it.
Excellent, excellent comments, and, uh, good thing we've got the YouTube video, so they can be easily, uh, looked at at a future date. Well, with that, I'll, I'll, I'll close the, uh, public comment. I guess my comment is relative to this board, and not necessarily for the public. But at the conclusion of the last month's meeting, we had the one variance request. And as, uh, one of the members of the public was leaving, I heard him distinctly refer to the board as, um, well, he called us pathetic.
Yes.
And... Yes, well, you're at the end, so I know we all, we all heard that. I actually watched the YouTube video, and if you know what to look for, you can hear it being said. Um, I think one of the board members after the meeting explained that they've been called a lot of things, but never pathetic.
Yeah.
Um, look, I understand, and I guess I'm saying this because that kind of behavior is just simply not, um, not acceptable in public meetings. Look, I understand that people can get, um, very emotional about this. Um, and I think many people agreed, for example, the last application that we're looking at relative to this, but a lot, everyone thought it looked good, we just couldn't fit it. So, you know, there's, there's emotions even on the board. Um, but there's no justification for these negative labels. I mean, everyone here, we live in Berkeley, we have Berkeley neighbors. That person could have easily been very close to one of our houses, I don't know. Um, we volunteer all our personal time, and that's not just the hour we spend here every month or every other month. There's, you know, people visiting sites, reading reviews, um, we put in more hours. I mean, hey, there's, Mr. Butts, I'd put you on the spot, but can you recall how long you've been on this board? I mean, up here, so we've got someone who's been here for a while, not to mention other members with zoning board experience in other communities. And, and we do this because we all care about the community. So, uh, I wanna dissuade anyone in the future. Please, if you've got issues with the board decisions, understand that it's not easy, but at the same time, the public is scrutinizing us to do the job that we're required to do under the ordinance, and we've got an obligation. We take our oath to do the right thing. Um, you know, I've been working in government since the late nineteen eighties, and no government can be all things to all people, and sometimes not everything goes everybody's way. It's just how it goes. Um, but I'm gonna recommend that anyone who'd like to make an impact on Berkeley, uh, have an influence, can really get a good idea of how government works, participate. We've got close to twenty boards and commissions. Not to mention, um, we talked a little bit about the steering committee, the ad hoc steering committee for the master plan. It's gonna be around only for a couple of years, um, but there's gonna be other opportunities. So any members of the public watching this on YouTube, uh, take the time to stop down to City Hall and feel free to get an idea of what the boards and commissions do. And if you're frustrated about a decision that a board's making, perhaps you can get on that board, or at least attend some meetings to get an idea of how the process works. So that's my comment.
Thank you.
And with that, we have no other business, so I will adjourn the meeting. Everybody have a good evening.
Good holidays.
Good holiday, everyone.